To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. You're welcome. It's good to see a great, great crowd down here. We're gonna just jump right in and we're gonna start off our public comment section. I'd like to read a little piece before that. It says, "In court informants with Iowa open meeting laws, no action or discussion can occur on items presented during public comment. The public should not make any assumptions or assertions based on the lack of response to public comment from council or staff." So I'll make sure everybody's aware of that. So with that, we've got one public comment registered in advance. Ms. Ferris, would you like to start? Can you step up?
I'm kinda long-winded. How long do I have?
About five, about four minutes, three minutes? State your name for us so we all know who that is.
Kate Martin.
Please state your name.
Okay, my name is Miki Ferris.
Okay, thank you.
Take me a minute. I'm here because I've known Bill Hodges for several decades, and he's served the community for years, as you know, as did his wife Jeannie, who worked for the police department for around 30 years before her untimely death. In all the years that I've known Bill, he has never, ever said one bad word about illegals or any Hispanics. What he said wasn't wrong. There are bad illegals in Hampton. The most recent were the two coaches who are alleged to have molested young children in this community. I won't go into the long list of things that have happened over the years, but there have been things. But the majority of the community is wonderful, great, kind, family people. But like, the regular community, well, not regular, recently, four people stole plaques out of the cemetery. So we have our own problems, but the illegals do, bad ones do exist, and you can't ignore it. And with the two coaches bringing ICE into the community, we all should be concentrating on our congressmen, and our senators, and our president to find, try to find some way for those that are illegal to get a green card or what it takes for a path to citizenship. This really is serious because we have good people who are illegal, and they're gonna need our help, the way things are going, especially since ICE has zeroed in on us. I really feel like Bill was treated in an outrageous way. It was like an attempt to destroy his good name. I couldn't believe the stuff that I read in the newspaper. It just was very, very bad. But I think we should concentrate on what we can do for the people that are here that are illegal. They're going to need help, I'm afraid, with all the publicity we've had with this coach thing. Anyway, that's about all that I have to say, except I will say that if this attack on his character, which is outrageous, I think, I will urge him to get a lawyer. It's that bad. But I really think that all of us in the community should try to find some way to help those who are illegal. I don't know the law on that, but surely, I've already written my congressman, I've written my senator, and I've written a letter to the President of the United States because I really feel that we should try to do something to protect them. Those that have been here for six, and some of them have been here for decades, and they really will, they will need some help. And that's about all I have to say. All right. Thank you.
All right. All right. Anybody else? Public comments?
Good evening. Seth Johnson, Mayor, City Council. Mr. Palmer, actually, a big thank you to you first before I start going. Just here tonight because it's kind of my last effort, chance to hopefully be heard. I've had a lot of wrongs done against me, and the police department simply does not want to do anything about it. They don't hear me, they don't do anything about anything, except for make my life harder. I have basically been kind of going off about this for about six months now, and only to have my name further slandered on Facebook, basically, because, yes, I do look like a rape addict. I'm not happy. Nobody deserves this treatment. And I wouldn't do this to, like, my worst enemy. Like, pedophiles and murderers get better treatment to this, but damn it, I'd still defend them. Sorry, I'm just a little worked up. Feels like I've been screaming for a while, just getting nowhere. Nobody's listening. Nobody cares. And I do apologize for speaking out of my turn. I'd like a chance to be able to clarify why I did a little bit. For one, I feel Bill was just getting that tactic hammered, and I have looked at everything that they've been complaining about. There's been nothing racial. They've made it racial. But outside of that, it's like that response you had, Davey, it's about, like, sympathy. Like, where's my sympathy? That's what I'm upset about. That's what I'm speaking up about. I've got none. But that's all I got. I think with that, I'm gonna go too.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Public comment?
Hi, my name is Isaac Bosberg. Just give me one sec. In addressing some of the recent things that have happened in our community, especially with ICE present, I'd simply like to talk a little bit about some of my experiences that I have had, kind of on the reciprocal side of the same issue. As many of you will know, last year I was fortunate enough to take part in a Department of State-funded international exchange program known as Yes Abroad, in which I spent the entirety of my junior year as an exchange student in Malaysia. Without a doubt, this has been the most transformative, eye-opening, and bias-shattering experience that I have ever lived through. To move 9,000 miles away from everything and everyone I have ever known seemed a daunting task, but luckily enough, I was taken in by a loving host family, attended an incredible host school, and was accepted into a particularly welcoming host community. Despite the fact that this was my first time ever living as a minority, where my religion was made up of less than 10% of my host countries, and I was the only one of my skin color for miles and miles in any direction, despite the fact that on the soccer field I was always known as Mata Biru, which was blue eyes, despite the fact that I was the embodiment of a culture and a nation, hardly anyone in my town of Sagama had firsthand experience of, outside of a movie screen, despite all this, I was welcomed. While in Malaysia, I learned to speak the local language. I learned to excel in school. I learned to eat according to the traditions and customs, though I knew none of it when I first arrived. When I first landed on Malaysian soil, I knew my pleases and thank-yous, and my days of the week. I could only count to 13 at the start because that's all I had practiced while selling sweet corn in the summer before. My language skills grew slowly and painfully slow at times. I accidentally hit people by eating with the wrong hand. I was failing every single one of my classes from August until December. Despite all this, I was welcomed. By the time I left, I was fully ingrained in the language, the culture, all the ins and outs of Malaysian society. Though I had lived there just shy of 10 months, I felt fully Malaysian. Accepting that I had to return home was, quite honestly, the most difficult thing I've ever had to do. I had made Malaysia home. I illustrate this to draw just one simple point. There is so much more to immigration than meets the eye. The long nights spent tirelessly working, the hours upon hours put into learning a language that you'll still butcher, that you'll still be made fun of for not knowing flawlessly, the ridicule, the unbridled animosity felt towards you by certain able-to-please. It's nearly impossible to balance it all, and yet somehow empathy and common decency are in short supply. Treating someone as a genuine member of our singular human race is practically unheard of, and when it is, it's labeled as woke or un-American. We are a nation built almost entirely off of immigration, for unless you belong completely to a Native American tribe, at some point, you too can trace your roots back to another national origin of your decision-making process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Public comment?
Hello, my name's Marlene Tap. I'm not good at speaking, so if I mess up, excuse me. Okay? This is not a criticism or anything on anybody's part, but I just wanted to know, or I should say, good evening, everyone, mayor, city administrator, and council members. Mr. Palmer, you had stated that you can make statements on social media but not have the courage to speak here. So that's why I am speaking here. Okay? Like I said, I'm not a public speaker. I get very nervous, so I apologize. With that being said, I would like to address the conditions of the streets on February 15th. People were wondering why the streets were not being plowed. I was also wondering that. On Friday, February 14th, school was dismissed early due to incoming weather. By 3:00 PM, snow flurries, wind along with sleep was on, was on and off, and it had started to accumulate some. I was up at 4:00 AM, no snow, but by 6:00 AM, it was snowing heavy at times. Before noon, the snow had stopped. We currently had more than two inches of snow. This was our first significant snowfall that needed to be plowed. While my husband and I were out cleaning our driveway, we saw a plow go on South Federal. I read on the Hampton Chronicle page on social media, the plans were only, the plan was to only run priority roads, then full staff was going out in the morning. This was addressed by the street foreman and public works director due to more snow in the forecast. Snow ordinance was in effect. My question is, why didn't the plows continue to clean the streets? I realize more snow was in the forecast, but the plows have gone out before, during, snowfall, and after snowfall. Two inches is when they go out, and this was certainly more than that. If one or two trucks were out, why not have the others come in and clear the roads? It has been done before, especially since the snow had stopped. I do realize it is difficult to plow with traffic. It can be done and has been done. I realize why uptown was not cleaned due to businesses that were open, which we need our businesses open when, you know, in town, because that is our lifeline. Also, I haven't personally done the plowing of the snow on the streets, but I have had firsthand knowledge of when they do go out. Forty-five years of experience, to be exact, when I know they have gone out. The plows could have done the residential areas, then go in early to do the uptown and finish up on Sunday what needed to be done, as this has been done before. On Sunday at 7:00 AM, my husband and I went out for a ride. The streets were cleaned and very much appreciated. The uptown was having snow removal done. While we were sleeping, they were out working early in the morning, which was greatly appreciated. I did talk to Doug a while on Sunday, and I asked him why the plows didn't go out, as we had had some people contact us why the plows weren't going out. I didn't know, 'cause, you know, not doing anything anymore with the plow removals or snow removal. So he had mentioned that the guys were walking on a water main break Friday night, and that they were, and that four were sick, and that full staff was being out on Sunday. I was just wondering how late did they work on the water break? Did they work till 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning? If not, you know, I can understand why they didn't go out and plow, 'cause working 12, 16 hours is a toll on a person when you're out plowing. And then, the city has full-time staff to do street norm, or to do street removal and walks. Ten with Doug. One is currently gone right now, but they still have nine for snow removal. That means three plow trucks, one grader, plus three pickup trucks, sorry, and one person or two do the walks. I do believe the streets could have been cleared, as they have in the past when snow had stopped. I'm not criticizing anybody's work or the job of the street department or Mr. Tar. But in conclusion, I do want to thank Jared Wykert, Chris Seinman, Nate Robertson, George Wyatt, Andy Sheeler, Jake Walker, Josh Tyler, Tyler Wannedham, and Doug for the work they did on Sunday. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Work for a public comment? I'm not hearing any, or seeing anymore, so we are going to move around, move on then. Next up on our agenda is the nuisance update. And I'll let you guys fight over who wants to start.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot tonight on the nuisance side of things. The snow, the weather has gotten nice, and the snow is melting, so it makes it a little bit easier for us to see the nuisances. They're a little more visible, so the guys are gonna be out and start looking around again, spotting those nuisances. Last week, or since last meeting, there was eight notices that went out. Five municipal citations are attempting to be served, and we have four court cases in process currently. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. Just in addition, we're gonna start planning for the citywide cleanup here in April, so I need to reach out to have a discussion with Jim there. The chamber's always been a major key player in that. And then, I think the snow removal notices that went out last week, there was, I believe, eight to 10 of those where people didn't shovel their sidewalks. I got notices sent, went through today, and most all of those have melted off by now, unfortunately, but they have. And then, we do have one deadline coming up for a property at the very dead end of Third Street Southwest, where there's a garage scheduled for demolition coming up here, I believe, the first week of March. And it looks like they were making some headway. The property owners were actually down there, observed, doing some work today to maybe clean that garage out. So that's good. Other than that, just entertain questions or concerns about the nuisance stuff.
Any questions? Nuisance? Not hearing any. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next, we're gonna discuss some parking regulation. I think you get to stay up here, Mark.
I do. I have included in your packet kind of a summary of our current parking ordinances. I know that some of you have brought up in the past what you'd like to see, what maybe you'd like changed. So we, I printed out those in your packet so you know what we currently have. And then I'm just asking that you bring up any discussion or what you'd like to see, or any changes that you might want. And then we can research those and bring them to a future meeting if there's something that you're thinking about. So it's just open to discussion.
Mark, do you want to review your, what you put together, just summarize?
Sure. Now I wish I wouldn't have typed so much.
There's some pictures, too.
Pictures are worth a thousand words. So, private parking regulations, no, and this as far as nuisance vehicles, no inoperable motor vehicles shall be parked, kept or stored on premises, and no vehicle shall be at any time in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or inoperable. A junk vehicle means any vehicle which is unlicensed, inoperable, has not been moved or operated in 30 days or more. It is unlawful to store junk inside of a vehicle. That's another one. And then a lot of times, we get complaints about vehicles in the front yard. So there is no off-street parking. Shall be permitted and required in front yard in any residential district except for a front yard of a school, recreational facility, or upon a driveway. The front yard definition is basically the front of the house to the street. That's self-explanatory. And then if you have a corner lot, it's both lots on the street. And those vehicles must also be licensed, operable, and moved every 30 days. And then in between the parking and the street, there's no parking allowed within that section, except there's one exception. When the snorness is in effect, you may park your vehicle in that right of way for a period of time that the snorness is in effect and 24 hours after that. And then, as far as the snorness goes in effect, based on forecast, we determine, or the public works director determines when that should be put in. He notifies me, and we send it out on our notification system. And then, no parking is allowed on any city streets at that point. Parking is allowed in the parking lots for 24 hours after the end of the snorness is pulled up. No parking downtown. I'm starting to summarize here, so if you have questions, hit me up. And then, so the vehicle impounding and towing, any vehicle parked in the road that is disabled, as in it constitutes an obstruction of traffic, we can pull that right away. A vehicle that's left unattended and is illegally parked can be pulled if it's causing a traffic hazard. Any vehicle parked on the street that is in violation of the snorness can be towed. If it's, and all the costs are assessed to the vehicle owner. That's what I've got so far. If there's questions.
These are, these are part of our ordinance already that you've summarized here for them?
Correct.
So who's got questions on parking?
I'd like to see more enforcement. We, you know, we had our blight study five, six years ago, and one of the things in blight was vehicles that are sitting around. We have got vehicles that sit around, and they're never moved. They need to either junk them, drive them, or, you know, sell them. That's part of the blight.
And I think we've towed probably, I don't know, seven cars in the last week and a half, two weeks. But according to our ordinance, like I said, it has to be operational, moved every 30 days, and registered. And so people do, when we send the notice, sometimes move them. I mean, they're still not moved for that long, but they moved. And so that is one contentious spot, I know, within the ordinance.
You know they're not moved if they're sitting inside of a fence, too. So how does that work with the ordinance?
As far as the camper, or?
Oh, campers are vehicles.
Yeah. So the one camper that we did write, basically, after talking to the city attorney and the, another attorney, if you can't see it, it can't be a nuisance to us. So they said there's no looking over fences. There's no, none of that.
No Googlers?
We didn't go that far into the weeds, but I can ask.
I guess that was the question I had, is if somebody had some junk vehicles, they just build a fence around them. That doesn't really cure the problem, but at least, we can't see them.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Not technically. One moment.
And then moved some of the operational ones that they were working on to the back. That's, I know that's what's behind that fence. There are other ones that are currently working on them. And I know the one north of the Windsor Theater, if that's the one we're talking about, too. He has contacted me this week as to, he has a lot of customer vehicles that are not getting picked up, and we just need to work through that process. I have helped them in the past to try to get junking titles for those, and I think that's what he's asking for. Again, it's just a matter of us helping him through all the paperwork. So I just gotta meet up with him this week or next.
Okay. And I know he's done his best to work with us, too.
Yeah.
You know, and there's, there's things, there's limits, you know, that we gotta, that we gotta help with him, help him a little bit as well. I was just curious, you know, on the fence thing, if we can't look over the fence and the guy can, you know, fill their yard, then we're gonna...
Yeah, she just said that it basically has to be offensive to a fence, and if you can't see it, it can't be offensive to you. And that's from the attorney, not from me. From the attorney.
Gotcha. All right. Anybody else? Mr. Palmer?
Mrs. Twitchen?
Can we ask her a question?
Sure.
I live in Hampton Houser, and we've always, we always have to move our cars over into the school parking lot, so that they can clean our area.
Yep.
But now, it's difficult because there's not hard-able parking. Is it legal for us to park on the?
Not during the snow removal, not during the ordinance, no. The school has been working with a lot of those people still to get those cars over there, then they remove the snow over there, and they know each other, Trev and the maintenance worker up there. So it's working out. Once in a while, a car gets left up there, and we gotta tell them to go move it, but other than that, we haven't had too many problems up there. But it only snowed once this year, so.
Right, right. Hang on.
And hopefully, that project is gonna be done in August, so there'll be more parking up there by next year.
All right. Anybody else?
If there's something that you want me to look up, email me, text me, write something, we can bring it up at a future meeting. If there's something different you want.
I don't think there's any problem spots right now, other than Sixth Avenue and First Street, right there by the pool, the corner, but.
Yeah, we've already talked about that one, so.
What about, what about that area, oh, by, it's across from Pat Poling's house. There was always congestion there, and cars in the yard, and some shade tree mechanic was always working on something.
I think we have that one taken care of for the most part. I haven't been by there recently, but he got a notice, cleaned it all out of there, and he actually moved out by Alexander or North Latimer.
Good, good.
Is the no parking down by South Side, is that taken care of?
I called, I wasn't around that day, but when he went down there, there was nobody parked in the no parking section. So I'm not sure. It was a timing thing, or a certain part of the day that you saw that, or?
Okay. Has any issues, parking issues? See the chief. All right. Thank you. Next up, we're gonna talk about snow removal, parking hall, protocol. Jerry, I think you asked to have that put on the agenda, so if you'd kick us off.
Yeah, I asked to have it put on the agenda because, related to the snowfall that we had a week ago Saturday, there were a lot of complaints. And I wanted to give Doug an opportunity to explain the decision process and to help us understand and maybe eliminate some of the complaints and answer some questions. I do, you know, a question that I have is, being a Main Street business, is it is difficult when the Main Street isn't cleared off. And Saturday, we had a lot of cars getting stuck at the corner. Why people can't stay home when it's snowing, I don't understand. It was a matter of life and death to come in and do ceramics. But yet, we had some businesses that were confused, too. Do we open? The snow ordinance is in effect. Can people drive downtown and park? And so there were some businesses that remained closed because they weren't sure if they should be open or not. I would have chosen to remain closed, but we had people that had to do ceramics Saturday. But, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to explain the protocol, the procedure, and help me understand and help help me understand and help everybody else understand.
Yes, I think, I think I gave you guys all a handout a little bit. Somebody have one of those handy that I can borrow it to refer to a little bit?
Yeah, here.
Please.
Just in the meantime, Becky, how are we doing with YouTube?
It's okay right now.
Okay, and it's been good for a while? Okay, thank you.
So basically, the unwritten policy and the rule of thumb for the last twenty years that I've been here is two inches prompts us to call the snow ordinance into effect. Every snowfall is different. Every single snowfall is different. It depends because it always starts when it starts and it ends when it ends. And a lot of times the forecasts don't predict that. There's just a plethora of things that I've alluded to. So an actual accumulation of two-inch prompts that we get with staff, I'll refer, years ago, it used to be to Randy Greifey. Before that, it was Russ Morgan. And now it's Nate Robertson's the foreman down there. We have a discussion. We take a look at what the forecast is. How much snow are we going to get? What's the consistency of the snow that we're getting? In the last twenty years, and I actually talked to Randy today to remind me a little bit, because he's been around here a lot longer than I have, but from my recollection, we typically always tried to do the snow removal at night because, number one, it's the safest. That is one hundred percent when it's the safest to do so. Now, having said that, we have plowed during the day, but in the last twenty years that I've been here, I think we've probably done that less than ten times easy, hands down. What kind of prompted us to do a full board daytime snow plow would be if we were lucky enough to get like a warm, warm day where we could scrape streets and we need the sunlight to do that, we would go ahead and do some of that during the day then. If we had a snowfall that exceeded like, like eight inches or seven inches, so we got a good solid four, five, six inches on the ground, we got another four, five, or six coming the next day, we might choose to go out and do a little bit of daytime plowing. We've never really done curb-to-curb during the day like that unless we absolutely had to. We did it once last year. We got lucky, and it worked out pretty well. However, this last one, we had more snow, we had snow forecasted and the, I believe the forecast was till 6:00 PM. There is a winter weather advisory. That means people should be staying home as per the weather advisory. Now, like you said, people like to go. People like to do ceramics, they like to go get tattoos, they like to do a lot of things. You know, I understand that. Having said that, can you imagine with all the traffic downtown on a Saturday, going to some of the businesses, trying to clear that curb-to-curb and do a good job? Not to mention the risk and the liability of that. The times that we did plow during the day, I can also tell you, there were a few accidents over the years because of we were out plowing during the day. So that's another thing that enters into it. But this last one, I really stand beside, behind that decision. We did get more snow in the overnight hours between the, what was it, the fifteenth and sixteenth? Not a lot, but enough to where we probably would have gone out again another day. So we actually saved the city money. We're, to me, we were fiscally responsible. We did it safely. I understand it wasn't to everybody's liking. We did send a couple plows out to do main runs, and we've done that historically a little bit. And then we also sent out somebody to start working on sidewalks, knowing full well they weren't going to get everything cleared up that afternoon, but we did work on it a little bit. So, and from Marlene's question from earlier, I think Wire Department staff, it was ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night before they got completed on the highway there. And the guys that weren't feeling well, they still came in the next night. We had, everybody's been fighting the flu, their kids have been fighting the flu, there's been all kinds of that with staffing and stuff, too. So that really had very little effect on why we chose to do what we did. We've been doing it this way for a lot of years, and ironically enough, Iowa Falls did it the same exact way we did it. If people want to change, that's for you guys to, if you want me to change some things, we can always have, I'm open to any discussion. If someone wants to give me a silver bullet and we can figure it out, I'm always open for suggestions, but, you know, it was just the timing of it. And like I said, every snowfall's different, but I do stand behind how we did that one.
So I do have a couple of questions then.
Sure.
What is your expectation then? What do the downtown businesses do?
Right.
When the snow ordinance is in effect?
Yeah. If the snow ordinance is in effect, nobody got a ticket. Am I right, Chief? No one got a ticket during the day. If it's overnight?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. But yeah, during the day, no. People are, were going to not write tickets and, you know, that kind of, I think, just goes with common sense with the officers.
I did try to warn people. It's a mess downtown.
Right.
Still got to go.
Right. You know, I wish people could follow those advisories a little bit, but hey, I understand. It's free country. Go, go do what you got to do and, and just know that you're kind of taking it upon yourself, your own risk, and then drive for the conditions. We do have a number of people, like even when we were out at 2:00 AM on the, on the fifteenth, we try to stack our windrows nice and neat, pick up plows, try to clear the intersections to where people can still get around, and you'd still be surprised at the number of people that think it's fun to drive through our windrows and make a mess for us. That happens more frequently now. Usually it's a young man with a brand-new four-wheel-drive truck or something of that nature, but just things that are pretty common.
So that leads to me, the intersections, that leads me to the next question now.
Sure.
You had Main Street, First Street plowed.
Mm-hmm.
With the cone in the middle, but it was also there in the intersection, too. So people were trying to turn through the intersection, and that's where they were getting stuck.
Right. So when the guys were doing the, the main runs, they went down Main Street and piled it towards the middle, right? So we didn't have full-blown guys. I can talk to the guys about trying to clean that up a little bit better if we are going to do that in the future. Maybe come back and take a few swipes in there to make sure the intersection's cleaned out enough to where people can get around, because you'd be surprised, the number of people that if they have to drive like two blocks and go around the block to get somewhere, they get upset.
I know. I did have to drive around two times.
It, yeah, it happens. But then there's some people that, well, how do I get there? I just need to go right there. And I'm like, well, you just go down to Third Avenue and turn around the block, you'll get there. But I understand. You know, and it's first snowfall every year, we always get those complaints typically. Usually PD's written probably eighty tickets, and there's always those concerns and complaints as well. It just, it's part of the job.
And my, my last question, Pat?
Oh, no, I'm not.
My last question is the crosswalks. The, the entrance to the crosswalk, from the sidewalk to the crosswalk.
Right.
Who's responsible for that? Because that...
The adjacent property owner.
So if I'm shoveling the corner, I need to clear that crosswalk?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My biggest thing is, is the, on the complaint side of it, is I get so many complaints about your city dump truck runs that stop sign coming up from the pool at First Street. And I said, if they stop, they'd never get going again.
Correct.
And, and it's a matter of just stay out of their way.
It is. However, one, we try very hard once 6:00 AM hits to abide by that. And, and that's kind of been a, an issue over the years, but you're right, because it freezes and it gets slick and hacked.
Yeah, you, you can't get up that hill. And I noticed, too, that, and I finally figured it out, we all kind of put our heads together there today. Every time I was downtown in the winter and when it froze on a Tuesday or a Friday, I see water on the streets. I'm thinking, what's that water on the, well, it's the garbage trucks. They're leaking water. People throw in half bottles of water, whatever, and they get crushed. And when they take off from an intersection, there spills out all the water on the street and it freezes up. And so that's that. I just tell people, look, they're going to run that stop sign to get up the hill, you just got to stay out of their way. When I see a dump truck coming, I usually stop. I'm not going to challenge the dump truck. And I did pass along about every complaint that I had, I just passed it on to you because you were the guy to pass it on to. I did talk to several people down at Glendale Park, and they told me it was a non-issue and not worry about it. So you've got people that it was a dire emergency, and other people said, don't worry about it. My concern comes from the sporting event situation. Okay, school was canceled on the fourteenth, correct?
Yep.
But we still had games and activities on the fifteenth when I thought the weather was worse. And that's what I don't understand, is streets were a mess. I know the high school had to be a mess, but yet they had to have those tournament games or whatever they had to have, when nine times out of ten, had it been during a weekday, they'd have canceled them, too.
Right.
But anyway, I'm not...
It's tournament time, I suppose.
I'm not on the school board, I don't have to worry about that sort of stuff. But anyway, the main thing was they got done and the town looked good after they got done.
Thank you. Yeah, there was, I will say this, too, the only thing I really wasn't pleased about how the process went was one of the newer staff members had the skid loader with the plow, and they didn't, they didn't stay on the sidewalk where they chewed up some sod and like, and that happens once in a while. So I did give them a little bit of, some advice on how to proceed where that wouldn't happen in the future, so.
And, you know, I hear that.
Try to address that.
Now, the city doesn't shovel their own sidewalks, how come we got to shovel ours? It's, oh, they get right on it. You know, just because downtown isn't shoveled, that's not city sidewalk.
Right.
So anyway, but...
Yeah, it just takes time, too. And the more snow, the worse. But every snowstorm's different.
And I appreciate you coming in and getting questions answered.
Sure, thank you.
That's my quick add, that I thought, I thought that Saturday was handled as best as we could be. I think we had a situation last year, too, where it had a problem, and it was the timing, and it was the weekend, and, and the weekend always throws a little wrench in it.
Yeah.
But Doug communicated what's going to happen. Here's, here's our plan to all of us, not to Marlene, sorry. But everybody got that same message. And that's when people come to you, I think that's the message you want to convey to them. Not, well, let me see what we can do. We can look at it down, down the road, but, but at that point, here's, here's the message we got. Here's what's going to happen. And if businesses want to stay, stay, stay open, you know, again, that's their prerogative. You know, knock, knock yourself out and, and bring your, bring your shovels.
And the other thing about it is, is I can't message Barry and Jim and Bill and everybody and get together online and figure it out, because that's an illegal meeting. I can only talk to you and you can talk to me.
Right.
Every other conversation has to be private or else we get into a situation.
Right. And that's where I was just going to ask you, we can't, we can't micromanage the street department. When they're doing snow, Doug's in charge. And if you're doing something else, Doug's in charge. It's not for us to, at that point, to give just objections on how we should do it better. He made, he made the call, we did it, I thought it did well. The two words that kept coming up is efficiency and safety, safety. I got a call for the Saturday afternoon, four, four-thirty. He gave me two minutes, he talked about snow, and for the another twenty-five, he told me how bad the town was running. I said, well, thanks for calling, you know? But we got to, we got to, we got to entrust it to somebody. And, and when it comes to snow and it's, the first one is always the hardest. Everybody's going to, got a better way, and, and we're going to hear about it. This is kind of the way it is, it's going to happen. So, but thank you for getting everything in there. Thank you, Jerry, for putting that out here for discussion. Any other questions?
I'm just, we're just thankful it wasn't ice.
Oh, yeah.
Could have been a little much worse.
That's, when the slush freezes, it's terrible.
Yep. Yep. And now it's gone this week, so problems solved. All right.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, Louie.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the next item is the fluoride in the city water. I'm going to let Jerry kick that one off as well.
I don't want to open that whole can of worms and go back through all that we went through a few years back, but it is something that is in the news, it is something that's being brought to our attention. I think it's something that we need to educate ourselves on and be prepared to make a decision so we need, if we need to. So I did give you guys some information. I found as impartial information as possible, information that shared all viewpoints so that we could make some educated decisions about this. I know it's a lot of reading up, but I do implore you to read it. In September of last year, a federal judge did order the EPA to further regulate fluoride in the drinking water, because a lot more tests, great tests have been done, and it has been shown that it does affect, it's a neurotoxic, toxic chemical, and it does affect brain development, especially in our children, especially in utero when brain development is most critical. So that's something we need to think about. The next article, and I know it's from NPR, but it is an impartial article, it explains both viewpoints of fluoride in the drinking water and also goes into some of the testing that was done and some of the results of the tests. There is a journal from the American Medical Association, there's an article from them on the, they evaluated the tests that were done. It's some pretty heavy reading, it's kind of hard to get through, but basically, the conclusion is they do correlate the increase in fluoride and the decrease in, in childhood IQs. The higher the fluoride, the lower the IQs. There is that connection there. And so the definitely merits more investigating and looking at. The other article that I shared with you is from USA Today, that more and more towns are removing fluoride from their drinking water. And then I just, we use fluorosilic acid here in town to fluoride our water, and I just wanted you to know exactly what that was and really how much we spend on it. It costs about $10,000, between $10,000 and $12,000 a year to add this to our drinking water. And that includes the safety equipment that involves, because it is a dangerous chemical to, to be handling, and then also the testing equipment and the product used and so on. Our fluoridation level is approximately seven milligrams per liter, and this does take into consideration the natural fluoride level that we have in our water, which is at any given time between point two and point three milliliters, milligrams per, per liter. Seven milligrams is the recommended safety guideline. However, that is coming into question. We're getting fluoride through lots of other sources now, too. It's added to a lot of our foods. We have fluoridated toothpaste and mouthwashes and everything, so we are getting that. It's not like it's not out there and our kids are not getting it. In fact, the most effective way to get fluoride to your teeth is by actually brushing your teeth with fluoride toothpaste rather than ingesting it. And then lastly, I shared the material safety data sheet with you. This is one that I just pulled offline. Doug's got one in your handouts that is from the actual acid that we use here. But, you know, just to look at that, it is not a benign substance to use. It does carry some, some hazards with it, and we need to, to pay attention to that. And then Doug also gave us our 2023 water quality report for Hampton. So again, I'm just sharing this, I don't want to open this whole can of worms, but I do want us all to be educated on it so that we can make some informed decisions. We're working on our water treatment plant now. Do we want to include the fluoride in that or not? So that's, I brought it to the workshop, not to make any decisions, just something for us to think about and something more for us to talk about in the future.
So if we were, Doug, this might be your question. If we were to come to that conclusion that we were going to remove chloride from our water, is that something, what's that going to take, shutting it off or is there going to be something else involved?
Basically, right, I think basically we'd utilize what we have on hand, keep it the same rates or what have you until we run out, and then, yeah, it's as simple as turning the valve off. However, with this new project that we have, there are some things and components that will go into this project, whereas if we're deciding to take it out, I would like to do that sooner rather than later.
Right.
Just so we don't go to the extra expense of... Just so we don't go to the extra expense of, of the parts of this project. Now, it's not a lot, but it's, you know, it's gonna be a few thousand dollars, I'm sure. So, but anyway, yeah, it's, it's not hard to, to get rid of.
Okay. Who regulates this? The DNR?
Well, the DNR is kind of the police for the EPA. And it's my opinion that off of doing some of the, well, the studies on these go way back, many years. Europe got rid of fluoride many, many years ago because they found that it was same hazards that we're finding out today. But the Dental Association at one time had a very big, significant role in the United States. And, you know, they found the benefits to it. They, people much higher up than us. But, yeah, the people that are controlling it's EPA and DNR.
So can you filter that out with a Brita or a reverse osmos filter?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. I, to me, I believe you probably could, but to what extent, I don't know.
I got another question. Last question. On our laptops, it's a MSDS sheet. It's dated September 2011. Don't we have anything more current?
I didn't pull the actual one out of ours. I was looking for it, and it was short notice. I was trying to get that ready the other day, so I just pulled one off online that matched the same exact chemical makeup that ours is. You know, because there's a lot of different producers and manufacturers, you know. One of the big things is fluoride, if, if you see like, go into a big city and they got a bunch of big smoke stacks, depending on what type of, of plant that is, they will go in and scrub that, the inside of those stacks, and then what's left and remnants, they filter out, and that's where this hydrofluorosilic acid, acid comes. So that's where our fluoride's coming from. It's not the natural, like, well, three, when that was operational, we had a little bit of a higher natural fluoride content. And natural fluoride is obviously better for you than anything man-made, just like everything else. But ours is definitely coming from the scrubbers and the smoke stacks.
Thank you.
So the mayor asked about how the water department would go about stopping if the council decided to stop. But administratively, if the council should decide to stop adding water or fluoride to the water, it would have to be done by ordinance, because the decision was originally made in 1975 by ordinance. So you'd have to draft an ordinance, repealing ordinance 130 that was passed in 1975, which, that was attempted in 2006, and it, it failed by the council. But the, it's a simple ordinance. But it would have to be three readings of an ordinance, and then you'd state an effective date, and then they'd work with the, the water department on implementing that. Yes?
I got another question for Doug. Locally, are there towns that have it and not have it around us? Or does these rural water...
Yeah, no one's forced to do it. No, there are towns that don't have it, and there are towns that do have it. So it's kind of all across the board, I'm sure. Yep, it's not mandated by any means.
Green, Paul, there is about the time we were doing all that back in 2006. But I think that if you've paid any attention to Robert Kennedy Jr., the Health and Human Services Director, he's against it, and I don't think we're gonna have a choice. I think one day he's just gonna say, "Pull the plug," and the plug will be pulled, and that'll be that. So that's, that's my opinion of it. I don't, I don't think there's gonna be much, much dog in the fight, because it's gonna come from beyond us, and we can repeal the, whatever we need to repeal for, for the looks of it. But I don't think that we're gonna have it, because I think they're gonna pull it.
Right. I think you're right. And, and, you know, I reported after my conference up in Nyack this last fall that this was probably coming up for discussion. You know, and when it comes from them themselves at the EPA and the DNR, it, it's just finally, why the United States is finally figuring it out is beyond me, but that's where we're at.
Dental Association.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jerry, thanks for bringing that information. It's a lot of information. That's a...
I'm gonna quiz you on it.
Mr. Hodge.
Yes, there's any, whether it be in this report, I think a reason to be very concerned about putting fluoride in.
I think we all need to kind of look through that and, like I said, become educated on it and, and make a decision. What do we want to do for Hampton?
Do you want this on a future workshop agenda? If so, at what point in the future?
Six months.
Yeah. Right. As I say, give us time to, to look at. I mean, I don't know how much time it's gonna take.
I, I don't think it's gonna be ours to look at.
I don't think so.
I wanna give it six months, because then it's gonna drop off.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think it, I think people higher up than us are gonna make the decision for us. So I...
But we could pull, we could pull it if we wanted to.
Yeah, you could put it up in a month or two, but I still think by then it's gonna be done.
Let's look at it again in three months.
Yeah.
The thing, the only thing is Doug mentioned the water plant project, and we're implementing new controls, and part of the controls will be to control fluoride. So if you're leaning towards eliminating it, I would say do it sooner rather than we, you know, incur them costs, but, so.
Well, there'd be some cost savings, I would think.
And I don't know the amount, Bill. I mean, we could probably, that's something we can look into. Why don't we do that? Look into that. That'll give you an idea of whether it's, you know, a matter of, well, we should probably address this sooner. If, if they say, really not gonna be a cost difference, then you can say, well, then there's no hurry.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can look into that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Let's do that. All right.
Thank you.
And Bill, let me check your teeth. We're on fluoride. I'm just kidding. Moving on to street sweeper.
Yeah. So I came across this street sweeper that's for sale. We have a street sweeper. It's running good. This one, I'm just gonna show you, has come up for sale at an equipment supplier, and it is $16,500. We thought, given the condition of it, that staff is strongly considering that, that we should consider purchasing this. It's a 2002 Elgin Pelican, similar to the old green one you got, only a lot newer, in very good shape. Tires look good. Can't really tell if the brushes are gonna need to be replaced, but that's kind of one of the minor maintenance costs with, with sweepers. It's got a John Deere diesel motor, and we just feel like maybe we should give it a look. Now, why would we need a second one? Well, in case, it'd be nice to have a backup one in case the, the green one has mechanical issues and it's down. We can be, continue with sweeping. Or we can have them both out at certain times. We can, you know, accomplish the job faster and move on to other projects. So just showing you some pictures of it. It's in Minnesota, a couple hours away, and want to run it by you if you're okay with us possibly purchasing it. We have Doug and, and one of our mechanic employees scheduled to look at it tomorrow, go up and look at it. They would deliver it for free if we purchased it. Any thoughts?
What's, have you negotiated at all?
No, typically do that after we take a look at it. But it's pretty reasonable for the condition. I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of room for negotiating.
Doesn't look rusty or beat up.
No. They, the, the guy said that the town it came from was up by Green Bay. They traded in for a new one, and he said it's very well taken care of, and you'll see that when you come up and look at it.
What's the hours on it?
I think it's set on there.
Just a second, it might say here.
Or do they have a...
50,000 miles, 11,400 sweeper hours. John Deere diesel motor. He told me the horsepower. I can't remember.
It's the same motor, too, as the other one.
Okay. So, anyway, if you have strong objections, let us know now. We won't even go look at it.
I'd go look at it.
Yeah. I think that's kind of what we need, is just the concessions, if we, if we should go look at it tomorrow.
Such a limited-use piece of equipment.
Yeah.
You know, the last one was, how much was the last one?
$2,000.
No, the one before that.
Oh, the VAC, yeah.
Hundred and some thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Couple hundreds, probably. And there are even more now.
For what it gets used.
Yeah. We, we think it looks good. We'd like to go and take a look at it and purchase it if it, if it looks as good as we think, so.
Yep. Now's the time to buy, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and take a look at that and see if we can... All right. Next item, we're just gonna go through and give everybody a chance to do a report.
I have no report, but I have another obligation I have to go to, so I'm gonna take off now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lamos.
I'd like to say sometimes we curse at social media, but when a deal like that sweeper comes up, social media's great. It's just what you do with it. Thanks for passing that along to us.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
I appreciate the people speaking tonight and, and always come to the meetings, and this is how we get feedback. And, and everybody in this community is owed that podium to speak. And so that's why we have it there, and that's why we have a public hearing or public, public comments. So, anyway, appreciate all who spoke, and I appreciate the people who contacted me. I'm sure that not everybody agreed with me. Of course, they didn't. I, I knew that after the, the fourth swear word in a text message. But it's my job to talk to them, and it's my job to pass along concerns. So I did my job, and, and anytime anybody has to want to reach out, I'm more than happy to talk to them or reach out. So that's that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Greifey?
Well, I'm just gonna shock everybody tonight. I have no report.
No, you don't.
[laughing]
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hodge?
I have no report.
Wow. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up then. I got a couple of things. Just because we have extra time now. One thing I brought up and, or wanted to bring up is the, I don't know if anybody read the, read the Code Council column in the paper this, this week by Mr. Davies here. He kind of tore, kind of took apart our, our leadership's, leadership, leadership statement and kind of broke it down. And I think that says a lot of stuff about that statement. It doesn't, you know, it's not just much words. It's just every one of them, he broke it down. And I think that was, it was a good undertaking for him, and hopefully people are reading that and then understanding that. His last paragraph is exactly what I said the other, last week or two weeks ago. It was my hope that we can get, learn from any mistakes that we've made and move on. You know, we've got other things to do. We gotta get, we gotta keep moving, we gotta keep going forward. I won't get on that. So, thanks tonight. And the last thing I got, I just wanted to say, hey, we got an election coming up in November this year. We've got four speeds, four seats open up up here. Anybody that's up or interested, we want to, we want people. If other people want to come in, that's fine. If we want new ideas, that's fine, too. But I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we do have four, three wards up and the mayor, male seat, in seat in May, in November. I did check with Katie Flint. The nomination plays, papers will be available August 26th, 27th, 23rd time, August 25th this year. And they will need to be turned in by 9:28. So just coming up, keep it in the back of your mind. It's a long, long ways off, but you know how, how fast the, the time goes, at least for me. So keep it, keep it in the back of your heads, and, and if you're interested, put your hat in, let's, in your name in and see what you want to do. Other than that, I don't have anything else. So we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. This is really concerning.
You're welcome.